Good morning and welcome everyone. This is a special call meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County. Madam Clerk, would you call it all for the purposes of form?
Chairman Rob Pitt.
Present.
Commissioner Liz Hausman.
Present, and just for the records, there's some technical issues.
Still can't use our video here.
Commissioner Bob Ellis.
Present.
Commissioner Lee Morris.
I'm present.
Vice Chair Natalie Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Marvin Arrington Jr. Commissioner Adia Abdurrahman. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
All right, we have a call and present now. Would you call it all for the mayors? You're working on the technical problems, correct?
Yes, sir.
City of Alpharetta, Mayor Gilvin.
Present.
City of Atlanta, Mayor Bottom. Chattahoochee Hills, Mayor Reed. College Park, Mayor Motley Broom.
Present.
East Point, Mayor Holiday Ingram. City of Auburn, Mayor Carhurst. City of Hayfield, Mayor Hallman. City of Johns Creek, Mayor Botker. Milton, Mayor Lockwood. Mayor Steele. Del Meadow. Mayor Bodie.
Present.
City of Roswell, Mayor Henry.
Present.
Sandy Springs, Mayor Paul.
Present.
City of South Fulton, Mayor Edwards.
Present.
And Union City, Mayor Williams.
I am here and we still are prayerful that we can get all of the technical issues resolved because I would love to see all of my, there we go. But I do want to share with everyone, Mayor Hurst will not be joining us. Please keep her in your prayers. She lost her daughter this morning. So please keep her in your prayers. As many of you know, her daughter Kim has been struggling with this ugly cancer for a number of years and certainly she went on to be with the Lord early this morning. So I wanted to share that with everyone as we continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for that information. So everyone should have received a copy of the agenda. The three items that have been approved and reviewed by the group with the two mayors. The three items are the T-Sploß renewal, transit, and the COVID vaccine update. I've been asked to take the COVID vaccine update first since if there are no objections to that so that Dr. Paxton can be here to go over that with us. So here, no objections. Let us begin with the COVID vaccine update. Dr. Paxton? Dr. Paxton? She has not. All right, what would you like to take then if she's not available?
Then I would move on to the T-Sploß.
All right. We'll take the T-Sploß while we're waiting for Dr. Paxton. Who's going to do the presentation on the T-Sploß?
So I think what from talking to the mayors yesterday and Mayor Botker and Mayor Reed are both on, we'd like to ask them to provide their perspective on discussions with their respective groups and then we have our consultants available and Anna Roach, our chief operating officer, will lead us through a brief discussion of the decision options that are before you. And then we have again Eric Bozeman and Todd Long. As I expect you'll get into a lot of the issues around the language and the code itself and then what's available in terms of modifications. So.
Neither of them were on. Member Rock and Mayor Reed, neither one of them are on.
Committee on the 27th and Council on February 5th.
So let's see. Being the presentation is the presentation, right?
Right. Okay. I mean, we could certainly go into the presentation if they're not available.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Does anyone know if they're trying to join and they're having an issue or?
I'm contacting both right now.
Yeah.
I know Mayor Holiday Ingram's having issues getting on.
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, this is Anna Roach. I did speak to Mayor Reed and he did say he was having trouble getting on.
Okay.
Someone needs to send the link to Tom that you have because he's trying to get on.
Okay.
Tom, we're gonna send you the link.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm not taking, but what I don't understand is why some get on and some can't. And I need to have this, all of this worked out before 10 o'clock. With the audio and the video.
Sometimes it's on their end, Chairman.
What?
Sometimes it's on their end.
No, it was on the, it was on the host end this time.
Yes, it was. Mr. Chairman, I had problems getting in when I tried to use the actual meeting ID and the passcode. When I got to the passcode to enter it in, it did not work. But when I used the actual link that I believe it was Jessica who emailed it to us, that link actually works.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair.
So recognizing that this is a lot, I know that city council members were also given the opportunity to view, is that set up? Do we know?
Yes.
And I think the clerks communicated to provide that to them.
Yes.
Are we taking a role of any way of knowing how many council members are participating today?
We did.
Is there way?
It's auto-generated and so who else participates?
There's not a role, is it a count of the number of city councils who are participating?
Yeah, just an idea of how many were we were able to bring in today, I think would be good information for us.
Is Mayor Reed with us yet?
Sorry, I am here. I just got the right link. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Reed. All right, Madam COO.
Mayor Ingram is here as well.
Mary, thank you for joining us as well. All right, Madam COO.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the Board of Commissioners as well as our mayors of Fulton County. Thank you for joining us this morning. I am here to provide an overview of the decisions that we outlined for you in terms of next steps, but I think it was the desire of the chair and the county manager to hear from mayors Botker and Reed to summarize any feedback from their individual conversations with their caucuses. So Mayor Reed, since I think we have you on, I haven't seen, yeah, I haven't seen Mayor Botker yet, so I don't know if you want to go ahead and start and provide us a report out, if you will, of where the South Fulton mayors are.
We're talking specifically about T-Sploß here. Sorry, I missed the introduction.
We are, we are, Mayor Reed.
I mean, you know, the mayors in South Fulton are very strongly interested in making sure that we have a T-Sploß referendum this fall. It's a critically important piece of our budgeting for, you know, keeping our roads in shape and all of that and we recognize that we may not have the the same situation as everybody else, but everybody on the south really wants to keep that and focus on state of good repair sort of projects. That's the primary focus on the south side.
Okay, well, well, thank you, Mayor Reed. And that I think is a good transition into to my remarks because again, we have enjoyed the benefit of the transportation sploß for the last several years. I do think there is a good amount of interest, not just with elected officials, but with the public at large, in continuing the improvements that we've again had the benefit of enjoying for the last several years. And that does bring us to trying to get to the next slide here. Next slide. Thank you. That does bring us to the decision points that I think the chairman and the mayors could use to guide the discussion today. Fundamentally, as Mayor Reed indicated, the primary question is whether or not Fulton County should renew the T-Sploß at all. And you will see that these decisions are organized with a rough timeline to the left of the slide and the first three groups of decisions need to be made sometime this month. And so we're having this discussion in January and we should make a decision one way or the other whether or not the mayors and the commissioners wish to proceed with renewing the T-Sploß beyond March 30th, 2022. The timeline is important because the other thing that we provided was a memo from the Revenue Commissioner which gave us a timeline of the expiration of T-Sploß. So one way or the other, T-Sploß will expire and should we not make a decision on renewing it, then it will expire as scheduled. Following a decision on whether or not we are going to continue with our T-Sploß is a decision that we have in recent years started exploring with the adoption of our transit plan, which is whether or not Fulton County should use a portion of their next T-Sploß to fund priority projects within that transit plan. We've talked about two primary ones. One is BRT on 400 and the other is BRT on South Fulton Parkway. Within that decision, there are three options that we have again been discussing, which is shown there as 3A, 3B, and 3C. And the alternatives are to pursue the .75 T-Sploß with no transit at all. And the breakdown of the distribution by cities would be there, the estimate of the collection. The 3B shows .75 T-Sploß with the transit option. And 3C is a 1-cent T-Sploß with a transit option. Now, round four of decisions, again, if you'd like to walk through these decisions, just gives us what the next steps are from February to May of 2021, depending on which decision is made with respect to transit. The county manager stated in his remarks that we have Todd Long and Eric Bozeman along with our Public Works Director David Clark with us to answer any technical questions that the mayors may have as they walk through these decisions. But that is what we have to offer in terms of guidance for a discussion at this point. And Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you to open the floor for discussion. I don't know if Mayor Botker has joined us yet to provide his remarks, but if not, I'll hand it back over to you, sir. Mr. Chairman, I believe you guys are muted.
Is Mayor Botker with us?
Mr. Chairman, I've reached out to him. He's not replying. I know there's four or five of his city council members watching on YouTube, but don't have an update on if he's going to participate or not.
Okay, is there, is there anyone from any of the northern mayors could speak to the position of the mayors, northern mayors regarding the issue?
I think maybe Mayor Henry, since he was our previous chair, could probably adequately speak for all of us.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. Mayor Henry?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Thank you, Commissioner. We had, we've had numerous discussions and frankly, we haven't gotten to the point of past the T-Sploß, whether or not we are willing to go ahead and support MARTA. I will be taking this issue to my council for a committee meeting on the 27th of this month and a council meeting for a formal vote on February 8th. And I plan on going through this with them exactly the way you presented it today. There are a number of issues that we talked about and some concerns. One is no matter how we frame this cell of which the cities are going to have to sell it to the public, it's going to be looked at as a tax increase during a global pandemic. So that is one issue that's facing us. Another issue that is facing us is we're concerned because the referendum, the T-Sploß referendum would bring out an entirely different set of voting population and we have a lot of municipal elections this November. And what I really don't want to happen is have the T-Sploß issue wrapped around campaign platforms. So those were some of the things that we talked about. We also talked about, I have talked to my transportation department and our T-Sploß one, tier one projects are moving ahead nicely. They're not in any danger of stopping those projects. It would just be a matter of the T-Sploß two projects and if we, of course, pull the tier two, tier three from T-Sploß one. So we're in good shape. The other conversation that we've had as the mayors of North Fulton is what kind of money do we leave on the table if we go for several months or even a year to do this in an off-cycle election? So we do have some differences of opinion up here on the north side, but those were the concerns we raised. And Mayor Paul, do you, did I convey that?
Yeah, I think you adequately conveyed everything. I'll give my minority report. You know, I'm not worried about the voters who shows up from municipal elections. That's the last thing I'm worried about. I think the voters take over elections no matter what we do. I've seen every manipulation and impact to try and figure out how to fix, not fix, how to manage electoral responses and I'm perfectly fine with having it on the ballot in November. If it brings more people to the municipal elections, I think more people voting is a good thing. But you know, we've, our staff is already working on T-Sploß two project list. But I'm going to take the same position I took five years ago. I'm going to support whatever we can get the adequate number of votes for because I think even, even though traffic issues are much lower, our traffic volumes right now are much lower than they traditionally have been. I think the day is coming that we're going to have the traffic back again and utilizing the reduced traffic to get some of these projects done has actually helped us a little bit. So I don't want to speak for my council because I haven't really broached this with them. I was waiting till after our meeting today, but I'm ready to take it to council and I think we'll have some support. The question will be over the transit piece. You know, Sandy Springs, we've got adequate, none of the projects on the list really directly impact Sandy Springs. There's a lot of positive indirect. So I'm not sure how my council is going to respond to that, but I feel very certain that they're going to want to go forward with the T-Sploß at least as it is today. And the sooner, without an interruption to, to those revenue sources to keep our projects moving forward. But I'm kind of a minority opinion amongst, amongst my dear, dear friends on the north side.
Mayor Gilvin, anything you want to add from the north?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Pitts. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the position of all the cities and Alpharetta is a little bit unique in the discussion only because so much of the transit component was slated for our city. And unfortunately, over the past few years, I've tried to tell MARTA and this commission that as long as MARTA did not work with the city of Alpharetta to set those priorities, I think anything that includes more money going to MARTA is a dead issue with our council and our residents right now. For the last 10 months, the city of Alpharetta taxpayers have been paying 1% to MARTA and had absolutely, it'd be polite to say we've had minimal service. And so they've had practically no benefit for the past year. Don't see anything changing anytime soon. And then to pay more for improvements that we weren't able to come to an agreement with MARTA on the priorities, that's highly unlikely. Now being said, I do think that our council and our community would be supportive of continuing the T-Sploß in a similar format that could be used for road improvements, road maintenance, perhaps even other infrastructure projects and things like that. So I do hope we'll move forward with the discussions and do so in a timely manner. But I think anything that includes a transit component increases is off the table for us in the short term.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yes, sir, Mayor Reed.
I just want to add a little bit of, I guess, detail flavor to the conversation that we've been having on the south side. The general consensus is pretty similar to what Jim just said. There is a lot of need given the funding gaps a lot of the cities have right now because of COVID to focus on state of good repair projects and road improvement projects. We recognize that that is maybe setting aside some of the strategic planning for down the road, but that's just not where people are right now. To Jim's point, MARTA hasn't been present in some of our cities over the course of the last few months because of COVID. People aren't necessarily very much enthused about the idea of spending more money on that, but we do need this funding for our road maintenance. It's become a part of our budgeting process and we want to make sure that that, to that extent, that we keep this program going and as it's been going seems the appropriate way for us as well.
Okay, I believe Mayor Botker has joined us. Mayor Botker?
I have and I apologize for being late. I was having some problems getting in and had a meeting running late before that. Can someone catch me up real quick on just the T-Sploß discussion to this moment?
Mayor Henry, you want to sort of summarize again for Mayor Botker?
Where did you come in, Mayor Botker?
When Rusty started talking.
And you pretty much heard most of the opinions.
Okay. So we were at the section where we're just trying to figure out whether we want to bring this before councils? Liz?
Yeah, pretty, pretty much. People were just given an assessment from their perspective of continuing at all. The three options that were presented, you know, I think you saw.
So I have not discussed this directly with my council. I did seek some input from them over the last day or so. I got mixed opinions, which I expected. I, my concerns are ones that I discussed when I had the opportunity to get together with my fellow North Fulton colleagues and briefly when I got to talk with Mayor Reed from the south side. And that is a November referendum to me is troublesome, both because you would be ramping up for that and having the discussions throughout this year in the midst of the pandemic, a weakened economy, and folks generally perceiving that traffic may not be as big a problem as they thought it was a number of, you know, months ago or a year ago. I think that that makes passing the referendum much more difficult, even though I recognize that continuing a referendum is easier than restarting a referendum, which is what would be the effect if we didn't hold a referendum in November. On the other side, it doesn't affect me in any way, shape, or form, but I do think it's important to note, if it hasn't been noted yet, that November is also all of the municipal elections and I think that just creates a different political climate than you normally have. And I don't know how that would impact this one way or the other, but I do think it would turn many of those campaigns into a discussion about T-Sploß. And for me, that's disappointing because I think there are a lot of municipal issues that need to be discussed during a municipal election and I suspect this could turn it into a one-topic conversation. So that being the case, I'm personally, and this is Mike Botker's personal opinion, I'm personally for a T-Sploß two if the projects are right and the allocation is right, et cetera. I just think it's important at this point to consider letting this lapse and pick it back up in 2022 or whenever we know that things have really turned around so that when we're having that discussion, the public has a perception that you're actually trying to solve a problem they perceive is a problem, which right now I just don't think they're going to see it as a problem.
Mr. Chair? Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, can, could I just ask a question of the, understand that there's maybe a lack of consensus about the clear path forward on, from the North Fulton mayors, but is there consensus if there were to be a move forward regarding you all not wanting transit to be a component to that? I mean, is that something at least y'all agree on?
You saying on the north side?
Yes, I mean, Mayor Reed's already expressed on the south side.
Thank you.
This is Mayor Gilvin. I'll just say that in the conversations I've had, none of the fellow mayors have mentioned the desire to have transit as an additional component and an increase or taking a portion of that, but I'll let them speak if they feel differently.
So I can tell you that I feel the BRT project is an important project, which is obviously the project that we wanted funded. I think that the current design that MARTA has is making it difficult to support it because a big part of it was not phase one, when you get the BRT running up and down Georgia 400, which was important, but it was supposed to be the spine that was going to feed the rest of the body coming east and west. And the way the stations are designed, that's going to be a much more difficult task. I think we had an expectation that the stations were going to be closer to east-west connectors and they end up in places where, like I said, the east-west connectivity is going to be difficult. And then, of course, I've talked with Mayor Gilvin and all of the issues related to parking and other things are important because it makes those stations that are in Alpharetta, which is the majority of where they are, central points for traffic. So the design is super important and I support the fact that we feel like a lot of work would need to be done there. So I do think, again, funding for the portion that we need of this project is important and I would hate to lose the project altogether.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Commissioner Hausman, you have the floor.
The east-west connectivity, Mr. Botker, I agree with you 100%. I think that, you know, it's been a while since there's been a real conversation with what the plans currently look like that everybody can look at together. I think perhaps as we, you know, decide yes, no, or a modification of some sort, that MARTA needs to come back and do an in-depth presentation of what exactly, you know, the five-year funding would do, what it looks like, if there's been any changes. I haven't seen a design in months myself. So, you know, I understand the hesitation, but I'm not sure everybody's clear on exactly what we're talking about currently with where the stations are and those kind of details.
Well, Commissioner, I think in fairness, the stations can still be changed, but I think the problem is there's been a push pretty hard, as you know, not by myself. I know that Mayor Gilvin has led that a lot and we haven't seen much budging on, on really solving the east-west part of that problem. And I get that.
A lot of it is financing too, not to cut you off, but I just really think that, you know, a real, a real honest look at what it, what we're talking about should be a part of any decision that's made to go forward.
Absolutely, but I think the problem that we've got here, so, and again, I apologize for being late, is the way I saw this discussion going today is we would have sort of a first level discussion about whether it made sense to hold a referendum in November. If there was consensus that it made sense and the mayors were willing to bring it back to their councils, to have the discussion at council gets us to the second part, which is what is the referendum framework? In other words, is it .5, .75? If it's .75, how much of that is allocated to transit, as MARTA has asked, and how much is allocated to roads? Clearly, we don't have to know the projects themselves because that's the next discussion if the city councils representing 60% or more of the population decide. representing 60% or more of the population decide to authorize moving forward with a referendum in November. I don't know if we even got consensus around the November or not November. Again, I'd be interested in that, but as much, Liz, as we'd like to fill in the details to figure out, you know, does the transit make sense? We're going to have to very quickly know the answer one way or the other, or I can't, in good faith, if there's going to be a transit component, bring it back to my council because they're going to ask, what is this for?
Well, that's the reason I suggested that. I agree, the first step is to decide yes, no on the T-Sploß in general. And then what's in it, of course, is the next thing that would have to be decided. You brought up the east-west connectivity, you brought up a lot of particulars. I was just suggesting that, you know, if the decision is to continue the conversation and the next step would be go take it to council and then, you know, develop projects, that while we're looking at what projects should be included, Martha needs to come back to us and explain to us exactly where they think they are and hear from us on what we would want to see in order to approve it.
Sure. I guess, Mr. Chairman, has there been consensus or polling to get some sense as to where the mayors are as it relates to the November question?
Not directly. I think that's what we're touching on here today.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mayor Bodie. Can I speak for just a second?
Yes, sir.
And listen to what everybody's saying this morning. Let's come to reality on this situation. If you want to muddy the water, divide the voters, and cause the renewal to be defeated, put transit in there, okay? If that's anybody's purpose whatsoever is not to renew this thing, just simply add transit, and I guarantee you, it's going to fail. That's the only controversy. When the voters are going in here to vote, and you know, we've had this first T-Sploß, which now we actually have something to show to the voters and say, hey, this was not a mistake. This is a success. You know, we asked them blindly to buy into this the first time. Well, now we're asking them to renew this to, based on, you know, what we've done with the monies already in all of our cities and stuff like that. We have a proven record, but we don't have anything to sell as far as Martha goes. So, you know, there's a simple way to go about this. Of course, all of us needs to agree to it. And I think South Fulton does agree to it. You know, our revenue base is not what North Fulton's is. You know, all this transit talk about Martha and all that is great for the future. But we're talking about today, you know, when we're fixing our streets and our sidewalks and stuff like that off of this T-Sploß money because we don't have the funds, you know, our general fund to do this work with. And so that's just my comment.
This is Mayor Henry. I've got a number of questions. One is, as I said in the beginning, I'll be taking this to committee on the 27th and to council on the 8th for a formal vote, just whether or not to go forward. And then we're talking about another presentation from Martha. And it seems as though, once again, we're rushing this into a timeframe that I personally am uncomfortable with. Because if we have another presentation from Martha, I'll tell you right now, I'm going to ask my entire council to make sure that they can attend virtually for that presentation because it's important for them to hear exactly what we're talking about, and I will go to my council for a vote on all of these issues. So if, I hate to repeat myself, but the timeline is just really, really tight. And if you want us to step out and sell this during an election year, I think you're rolling the dice, but like I said, I'll take it to council and see what they want to do.
Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Mayor, go ahead, please.
Thank you. So the position of the South Fulton mayors has been shared. I will be sharing this with my council at our upcoming work session on Monday for a vote thereafter. You know, in our city, regardless of the fact that it's an election year, what I can say to the voters and what I can show to our residents is the improvements that have been made because of T-Sploß. Road repairs, sidewalks, I mean, things that have been deferred and delayed for decades, we've been able to do with T-Sploß. And so, you know, I understand it's an election year, but I tend to be one who's not, tries not to make decisions based on whether or not I'm getting elected or whether or not it's impacting that election. It's whether or not it's good for the people. And whether or not it's good for the people in my city and the residents in my city, I believe that my council will unequivocally say yes because these have been things that have needed to have been done for the longest. And I also believe that our residents will support the T-Sploß as is because we can show them, as Mayor Bodie says, we were first saying this is what we want to do. We can now say this is what we've done. And so it seems like the decision, even on whether or not we're moving forward, can't really be made today because it sounds like we all have to take this back to our council to be sure. And so I suggest that we do that as soon as possible. I don't think it's, I mean, whether we wanted to be a comprehensive or a piece, you know, a portion of it, like we do want to try to move forward, A, and then B, have Martha come in and do the presentation, and that seems to be the sticky widget. Without it, it's clear that it can move forward. With it, it sounds like there's a lot of trepidation about it. And so if there's a desire to have a presentation from Martha, that's one thing. But I think the initial decision about whether or not we want to move forward, and if that is a key decision around the timeline, then that can be made prior to the Martha form, and maybe that's something we bring back at our February meeting of mayors is that, yes, we definitely want to do that. If we've also talked about the transit, we can talk about that as well. But, you know, the election year, I mean, elections happen every year, honestly. And the decisions that we make have to be people-focused, people-driven, putting people over politics. And I think in this, as we relate to, you know, transportation or improvements and infrastructure improvements within our city, T-Sploß one has been extremely successful.
Okay. Yes.
Vice Chair Hall, I just want to relay a message to you because it is 10:39 and Dr. Paxton said in the chat that she needs to finish by 11:00 AM. So I don't know how you want to handle that because I know she has a presentation. Don't know how long that presentation will take her.
So mayors, do you want to pause and hear the update on COVID while she's available?
This is Mayor Williams. That would be fine. I do have to leave. I have a hard 11 as well. And certainly would love to hear this presentation. But I do want to say I concur with Mayor Ingram. You know, the elections, the timing of the elections shouldn't, you know. And certainly, I hear my mayors on the North Side about the concern of, you know, politics and the message getting lost. But, you know, this is about putting people over politics. So certainly, the November timeline, I think that's something we should be reaching for. And certainly, we all should be sharing this with our council to make sure that this is something that we all want to do and need to do. Because certainly here in South Fulton, the projects are working, the people are seeing this as a positive. And I think it's time for us to really continue the momentum of getting this done. I mean, when we talk about elections, we certainly have seen what takes place over these past few months in election cycles. But certainly, we cannot let that stop what we do as elected leaders because it's not about if we get elected or not. And certainly, I want to certainly applaud Fulton County for an amazing job that you have done in turning the election process around. You've done a great job. And certainly, I'd love to hear from Dr. Paxton as well.
If I can interject, this is Mayor Henry. And I agree with the previous statements from the mayors. It's definitely unequivocally people over politics. And it is not my concern to get reelected. It is my concern that our messages get lost in the middle of a Martha discussion or a T-Sploß discussion. It is my concern that we are trying to sell something in the middle of a global pandemic when our businesses and our citizens are hurting to continue this. So my concern is not politics for myself. I want to clarify that. And it's definitely people over politics. However, just by virtue of putting this on the November ballot, politics from others are going to intercede.
Can I make a statement, please?
Yes, Commissioner Housman.
I just want to say to all the cities that, you know, our job is to facilitate this getting on the ballot as the county, but the money goes to all the cities. We, you know, we're going to support whatever decision y'all make. But we're not pushing you to do anything, giving you options. And y'all can mull them over and decide what's the best interest of your communities and move forward or not move forward or delay it. It's really your decision.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mayor Bodker?
When we pick the discussion back up, because I know the discussion we're going to pause to take is very important. I do have one ask that's specific to Johns Creek, and my fellow mayors can be thinking about this while we're in the pause mode. Johns Creek's number one problem right now, believe it or not, is not roads and intersections. It is stormwater. And stormwater is allowed under T-Sploß current legislation if it's associated with a road improvement. But the kind of stormwater work we need to do is beyond that. And my ask would be whether my fellow mayors would support an ask for change in the legislation, which would only apply to the way they wrote the legislation for Fulton County. They had a unique way of writing the legislation so they could change the threshold that stormwater infrastructure be generally included in T-Sploß-approved expenditures. If the mayors could support that, I'm not guaranteeing that Johns Creek would be on board, but I know it would change the discussion with the Johns Creek City Council. So I'd ask my mayors to think about that while we're in the pause mode.
Okay, so here we know objection, here we know objections to hearing from Dr. Paxton. Dr. Paxton, are you with us? We really have to get back to this T-Sploß discussion.
Yes, I'm here. And I'm, so I have to start off with an apology. I did not realize until I tried to log in that no one had sent me the login information. So it took a little while to get on. So anyway, I'm happy to go ahead. And can you display the slides and I can talk through them? Great. If you can just go ahead to the, okay, to the next slide. I'm just going to, you know, I know everyone has been, is very, you know, busy and you have to get back to your other discussion. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to bring all of the mayors up to date on where we stand with our vaccination efforts. As you are aware, all of the districts, the 18 district health departments are working in together, and we're working with the same overall priority population plan. And this, all of this information about what the priority phases are are on the Department of Public Health website, as well as the Fulton County Board of Health website. So you can always go back and refer to that there. So I'm just going to sort of touch on the highlights right now. We in Fulton received our first doses of the Pfizer vaccine on the 17th of December. And that day started, you know, vaccinating the Board of Health population and others. Currently, we are still in Phase 1A, which originally was healthcare personnel and the staff and residents of long-term care facilities. On Wednesday, the 30th, the governor made the decision to open up Tier 1A to all people over the age of 65. There wasn't much notice of that given to us, so we have been adjusting to that. That, however, that change is official, will officially start this coming Monday in which, so adults 65 and over and first responders such as fire, police, sheriff, 911 and the like, as of Monday, they are considered to be in Phase 1. So what we are currently doing right now is we are taking the remainder of this week to try and finish, or to the extent that we can, to vaccinate the healthcare personnel and the long-term care facilities in preparation for this new onslaught that we are expecting of newly eligible people to start on Monday. So just to briefly let you know where we sort of are, the Board of, there are many groups in Fulton which are working to get vaccinations out. The large, many of the large hospital systems, some pharmacies and the like are getting separate allocations of vaccine. They don't come through the Board of Health. They are going directly to like Emory and Grady, who are then vaccinating their own personnel. So we are, we at the Board of Health are not the only vaccine game in town. However, I think of us as we are the vaccine providers of last resort because people who are not covered by any of these other groups, they become our responsibility. We have received both the Pfizer vaccine, which you can think of as being the more finicky one because that's the one that requires special freezers at negative 70, which most hospitals do not have. And we also are getting the Moderna, we have the Moderna vaccine, which can be kept in a regular freezer. And that's the one we are more likely to share at satellite places because it's easier to transport and to get out. We have, so far, we just started just yesterday. We've now, we're able to start to give the second shots for people who got them on the day of the 17th. And we have set up several vaccination standing sites at the moment at our northern, at our northern site. And then we have our very large site at the Mercedes-Benz Stadium. And we will very soon be opening up a new site at Aviation. And that's because that will be the best site for us to be able to cater to the large number of people who are over 65, many of whom will have some mobility issues. And that will be by far the most accessible one. So we're going to stand that up as soon as possible. As I mentioned, we are going pedal to the metal to try and get healthcare workers and EMTs and the like vaccinated before Monday. So we're having a large events today and tomorrow at Mercedes-Benz Stadium, excuse me. And so far, we have, we opened as many appointments as we can. So we expect to be able to vaccinate about 2,500 people during these today and tomorrow. To date, we have managed to vaccinate about 450 Board of Health and Spock. Spock sites, you know, our specimen, our testing sites, personnel, we've managed to to vaccinate about 450. We have vaccinated about 750 EMTs and paramedics and about 1,500 unaffiliated healthcare workers. I mean, when I say unaffiliated against, they're not affiliated with like Emory or Grady and all that, so they came to us. Our current capability outside of these two, these two mega events we're having today and tomorrow at Mercedes-Benz Stadium, our current capability are that we can see about 250 a day at the north site, about 200 at our southern, south site at Wolf Creek, and about 350 at the Mercedes-Benz Stadium. However, we are working really quickly to get that capability up. And our goal is that we hope to, by around January 25th or so, be at the point where between all of our sites, we are doing at least 2,000 a day. And thank you for moving that, yes. Our plan is that at these three or four vaccination centers, we'll be able to do about 2,000 a day, so a total of about 12,000 a week. Now, all of this depends on some very key things. One is vaccine availability. As many of you probably know, just from reading the news, there is a nationwide relative scarcity of vaccine. So that's one thing we have to contend with. And then again, it's, we have to have the staffing and logistics to do this, what we call last mile provision. It turns up getting that vaccine out of your freezer and into people's arms. And that is And that is a massive logistic undertaking, which we're working on. So we're really working over this next few weeks to build, to get, to get it to the point where we can do at least 1,000 a day as soon as possible. And we're going to get where we intend to be at our maximum capacity by January 25th, because we are also going to then have to deal, these are two-dose vaccines. So we have to have the capacity to give out first doses and then be doing the second doses for those who are due for them. So our basic current, our planning effort all centers around is that we have learned, well, we knew this, but we've certainly had emphasized this, we've got to be agile and nimble and ready to adjust to circumstances as they happen like that. So the things that we've had to work on very diligently and quickly is creating a temporary registration system for now. Because the state, under the auspices of the Department of Public Health, is working on a scheduling system that all the district health departments can use. But it is not projected that they will be, that that will be available until sometime around January 20th or so. And we at Fulton have volunteered to be one of the initial, I don't know if you want to say test or pilot sites for that system, because we really want to get them on board. So we have been accepted, we will be one of the pilot sites for this, but it's not going to be for a little while. So we had to work on our temporary registration system. We've got, it's a monumental task. We've got to manage these, the doses by making sure that you, we, that people get the same. If they got the Pfizer vaccine for their first dose, they need to get it for their second. And we're working through all of these groups. We are doing, I think I will give all credo to my, my staff has been doing a fabulous job. I mean, you know, it's the Board of Health, working in conjunction with AFCEMA, working in conjunction with Fulton County Government, has been able to really do a monumental amount of work in a very short period of time. And so what we are doing is we have been able to open up more appointments. As I said, we are going to go live with the 65-plus on Monday. One thing that I am asking all of you mayors, and I can provide this to you. We understand that commissioners, mayors, everyone in government are receiving many, many inquiries from your constituents. We here at the Board of Health are getting 1,500 calls, emails and texts every single day about this. So we have retooled our call center to try to handle this. We have set up a particular email box for that. But it's a lot. And we recognize that you are probably getting some small portion of this as well. So I can also make available to you the sort of form email that I provided already to the commissioners to share with their staff to help answer some of the basic questions that come up over and over and over again. Actually, can I have the next slide? Some of this information might be on that. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. This was just, that's an early draft of what the, this email contains. But as I said, I can give you, I can arrange to get this to whoever organized this meeting so that you might, you can have that. But it does have some information that your constituents might appreciate. The other thing I have to bring, I have to just remind everyone about is that, as I mentioned before, there is a national shortage of vaccines. We already know that there is a misconception out there that as of Monday, we, the floodgates will open and everyone can show, come in and show up and get vaccinated. And that is not, that is not the case. I wish it were, it's not. I wish I could wave my magic wand. So we are working on a strictly appointment-based schedule. And we have to manage everyone's expectations that we open up appointments as we can, as vaccine becomes available and as our capacity is there to give them out. But our, the demand far exceeds the need at this moment. So I am urging you to please advise patients to your constituents. Many of them will not be able to get an appointment immediately, and they will have to keep checking back on our website or with our call center for those people who cannot use websites. So I just need to be upfront and let you all know about that, that we'd like your help to help us, again, manage the expectations of our clients. Can I see the next slide? Okay, I think now that was sort of what I wanted to get out. And if you have any questions, please feel free to.
Dr. Paxton, I do have a question.
Yes.
I have a question also.
Is there any social media messaging that you can share with us so we can better communicate with our constituents?
Yes, there will, there is. What I can do is have our head of communications sort of be the liaison about that. Again, I think one thing is I can arrange to have, send you our stock email thing as a request. But we are, we have a Facebook, an Instagram, a Twitter account. All I think are basically at Fulton Health. And we put, we encourage people to monitor that, because it has a lot of information there. Our primary source, easiest one is for people to go to our website, because a lot of this information is already there.
Thank you. Dr. Paxton.
Mayor Edwards.
Yes, how you doing? Thank you for all that you're doing. And I know that you'll be with us on the 14th of the month, I think. My question is just the one I've heard a lot was, as you administer the first round of vaccinations, okay? Would there be ample supply held over for those who need the second round as we go forward?
Yes, we have guaranteed, we, we have, that, that is, has been worked out. And so anyone who gets their first dose will get their second dose. They don't have to worry about that.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Mayor Bodie.
Mayor Bodie.
Yes, ma'am. I understand through our fire chief that we are actively with y'all's help organizing a vaccination site in Union City for the south side, similar to one they're doing in North Fulton, is that correct?
It could be, because.
If I may, Dr. Paxton, if I may, Mayor Bodie, that is incorrect. We, currently, we have three sites that Dr. Paxton was speaking to. We have the north site, we have one that's at Wolf Creek and one Mercedes-Benz. You heard Dr. Paxton say we'll be migrating to the Charlie Brown Airport site. In the future, we would love to look for something that would be in the Union City type of a footprint to help the further seven cities. But we do not have anything that is ready to go at this particular point, no, sir. I'd like to take this moment, though, to thank everyone that did offer paramedics to help us. The city of Sandy Springs, the city of Roswell, the city of Atlanta, the city of Milton, the city of South Fulton, and the city of Chattahoochee Hills. You all have went ahead and graciously devoted paramedics to the cause to help us make sure we can increase the capacity and be able to vaccinate more individuals, especially as we welcome the law enforcement partners next week to the vaccine program. So special thanks to you all for going above and beyond.
And if you.
Where's the, where's the north side location?
4700, sir, North Point.
Mayor Banka.
Dr. Paxton, first of all, if you all need more paramedics, please let us know. We'll try to do what we can to help the other cities that haven't been able to join in. And I understand the shortage of vaccine is the plan. And will you communicate to us at the appropriate time when we can spread out and make the vaccination sites a little more convenient by utilizing our paramedics in our cities to potentially have local administration points through the supply of vaccine through the county?
Yes, we would, you know, we actually are all hoping that we can soon start doing that, because it just makes it much more effective if we have more sites. So yes, you will probably most likely be hearing from Matt. Thank you, Matt, for, you know, for piping up. But as we make our plans and as we progress through this, we certainly hope to be doing more of this with our partners.
Okay. And I assume vaccine's been added into the weekly calls that the public safety folks are participating in, in our city managers?
Yes, sir. Right now, there's actually a call is occurring at 10 o'clock, and the rest of my team is doing that call. We would love to, I'd take you up on your offer. We have not had a lot of the other municipalities jump forward and offer their paramedics. So if you're doing that on behalf of your jurisdiction, I welcome that and I thank you for that.
Matt, if you'll just reach out to my city manager at Densmore. We're very lucky in that we have a very, very high concentration of paramedics within our fire department, so I'm pretty sure we'll be able to help out.
Yes, sir.
My hand is raised.
Madam Mayor, you have four.
Thank you. And so I know that I, along with my city manager and fire chief, and I was just trying to go through my emails and see who the person was that we met with from Fulton County regarding coordination. And I have spoken with my fire chief just recently, and he's indicated that he sent a number of emails to that individual and phone calls and has not received a response back. And so we are definitely standing willing, ready and able to assist in any way that we can. And we've been committed to that from day one to help ensure that we get through this pandemic together. So I would really appreciate it if someone would really reach back out to my fire chief, because we have been trying to follow up from that meeting that we had to no avail. And so that's critically important. The other critically important thing is one band, one sound as it relates to communicating to the public about, you know, who's in Phase 1, the addition of being able to have people over 65 be able to be tested in Phase 1. There should be one communication, and that coming from the county. So Mayor Broome, Motley Broome asked about social media. I would like to see if it's possible to get all of your communication collateral so that we're sending out the same information, that I'm not trying to paraphrase information from the slides that have been shared to communicate with our residents what is or is not. I think all of the communication and any of the material, communication material or collateral should be coming from the county. Share it with the city so that we can send that out. And again, have one message, one band, one sound, like we're all saying the same thing. This unprecedented time of uncertainty is extremely challenging enough. And what we don't want to have is a lot of different messages or mixed messaging out. So that would be my request to get, you know, not just only the social media posts, but information that we can send out through our access east point or through emails or on our public information television station, like all of that type of information coming from the county, so that we're being consistent.
Other questions or comments?
This is Vince Williams, I have a comment. And this is directed to Matt. Matt, I just had a discussion with my fire chief on yesterday, and he was inquiring on behalf of Fulton County of a site for vaccines. So I'm a little befuddled at this moment. And certainly, he's also shared with me that a number of our men and women have been involved in training to make sure that they can participate as it relates to offering services for vaccines. So I'm a little concerned that the messaging is getting kind of missed here. You know, I mean, I'm hearing that Fulton County is reaching out and wants us to participate. We're getting support from certain cities, but I'm hearing, you know, one other message from some of my team. And I'm going to have a talk with him again today to let him know that, you know, apparently what you shared with me yesterday was not true. You know, so I'm just concerned that because of the complexity of where we are, but also we're in extraordinary times, dealing with extraordinary challenges, and it's going to take extraordinary leadership to make sure that all of our communities are served and that the message does not get muddied in any capacity as it relates to making sure that the vaccines are out. And even more information about COVID-19. We, we see what is happening right now. All of us see that the spike is just horrible. And we've got to continue the messaging around COVID-19 and also making sure that the vaccine information is properly shared with all communities. So that's all I have right now, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I can make one more quick statement.
Yes, please.
Yes, the Fulton County representative was Roland Flynn. So Mr. Calmer Matthew, I don't want to mess up your last name. If he works for you, if you can have him respond back to my fire chief, that would be great. I'm not sure who he works for. But we've been trying to communicate and coordinate. And so again, we stand ready, willing and able. I too am a little disappointed at the way that the comments were shared as if there's been an effort by the county to reaching out to all of the cities, and only some have responded. So I look forward to better communication and coordination. Again, this is an unprecedented time of uncertainty. We stand ready, willing and able. And we would love to be able to receive the same level of communication or offers that are made at other places, and this is not the time for that. So I'm optimistic that moving forward, we will continue in that vein. And I look forward to receiving all of the communication information from the county so that we can communicate with one message. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, that individual is not a county employee. He does work for the Board of Health. I'll reach out to him and find out what conversations he did have with your community and try to figure out how we can go ahead and connect the dots there, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else for Dr. Paxton? Any further questions or comments for Dr. Paxton? If not, Dr. Paxton, thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Go back to TSPLOST. Now, Mr. Manager, let's put this in perspective as to where we are. I mean, the clock is ticking.
Yes, sir. Well, I don't think we heard much support for transit. I just want to remind the group, because I think it is a very significant decision, that what we have done thus far to prepare the path forward for transit is the following. Number one, we created an overall transit plan that did deal with east-west connectivity, north-south, major job centers and the like. Number two, we passed as a part of the historic TSPLOST, the option for a Point 2 referendum that would run 30 years into the future to fund transit. Number three, we secured 100 million in investment from the state, the first ever, to enable transit, specifically BRT on Georgia 400. Number four, we gained agreement from MARTA as it relates to funding for operations and maintenance on 400 and at the time, South Fulton Parkway as two primary routes that would be done with no incremental tax effect to citizens. And then I think lastly, where we've come to, given the, all of the issues that arose relative to the pandemic, certainly, and the thought that passing a Point 2 referendum was then a non-starter, was the option to include it inside of the TSPLOST. So all of that work has been done. And by the way, all of that's been done over a four-year period. So I'm not sure how we find ourselves either A, not understanding, or B, thinking that this is a short timeline. It really isn't. It's progressed in this manner based on the decision process. Now, where we do find ourselves is if you want to move forward with a TSPLOST, the clock really is ticking. If, in fact, you want to have that election take place in 2021. Now, as we laid out the schedule before, the decision really needs to be made in this January, February timeframe at the latest where project lists can be developed, although maybe the project list development is simplified if fundamentally what you would be doing is looking at Tier 2 and 3. But nonetheless, I think that first order question needs to be some way asked and answered by the group. We do know, and Todd Long and Eric are on here as well, we had our legal staff confirm this yesterday, that if mayors representing at least 60% of the population outside the city of Atlanta decided, must decide to move forward to even have an effective TSPLOST go onto the ballot, the question would be, would it really be passed if there was a significant portion of mayors representing that much population that were not in favor of it? But it doesn't sound like there's much support for these options to move forward on transit at this time. So at a minimum bid, a decision does need to be made, I think, on TSPLOST. If not in this meeting, the next one. And I think what we were certainly looking for is a consensus view, which I'm not sure was expressed today. It was, it was hard to tell if it was expressed today, whereby you could begin to move forward on TSPLOST if, in fact, you're not. Whereby you could begin to move forward on T-SLOSS if in fact you're not going to consider transit as a portion of it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mary.
If, if I may, I, I think I've heard a couple of things in the conversation so far. And, and just want to see if what I'm hearing from the other mayors is, is what they're saying. There was a question about stormwater and the possibility of changing the way that this referendum went through to allow a broader definition of stormwater. To be included in the T-SLOSS. If that's legal, it seems to me that that would be appropriate. Because again, cities are putting together their own lists. If you need to do that, and that's the appropriate list in your city, great. Other cities may not need that. My understanding also is that you can designate a portion of your money to transit if you choose to, even if transit isn't on the list. And, and could you confirm those things? Could somebody confirm those things? Because it seems to me that that's a way that you can get to a kind of common ground where people can do. What is most appropriate to the needs and decisions of their city and, and potentially move this thing forward.
Tom, I can answer both of your questions. The answer about the second one, cities can allocate voluntarily portions of their money which can be pooled together for purposes of transit. So that's a yes under the current law. The stormwater issue was the one I raised and what I said was when you're working on a road project, if there is stormwater connected to that road project, that's currently allowed under the current T-SLOSS law. But the broader ask that I was asking was whether the mayors would support, if the legislature would, a change in the Fulton County portion of the T-SLOSS law. To allow unrelated to road infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure expenditures.
And so if I may be heard, Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Yes, please go ahead.
So it doesn't seem like any of those decisions are going to be made today. We have to take this back to our councils as soon as possible. So to try to, I, I don't think there's any reason to continue to prolong this portion of the agenda because that decision won't be made today. I, I'll be taking it to my council for work session on this Monday. And so we'll definitely be able to make with either the January or February timeframe. I do understand the urgency needed for this, and that's why I've asked that it be placed on our Monday agenda. But we're not going to make those decisions today. So my question is, understanding that. And it doesn't sound like we'll have anything before the next mayor's meeting. Is there anything further on T-SLOSS that we can get through today? It's a slightly a rhetorical question because I don't believe so. And if not, I think we've all heard from all of our colleagues, the concern shared or the ask or the things that they're considering. And we can include that in our discussions with our councils.
Go ahead.
I'm just saying the process that was used before allowed the mayors to give us a kind of a strong vote on the consensus of whether or not we even had a consensus of the mayors. Before they went to their actual councils with the, the information. The concern, I just wanted to let you know, they, they laid out a timeframe. You're not going to make November. Unless you all start indicating what you want to do. And I heard from your discussions today that it's clear that you're not going to have a consensus and support of a T-SLOSS on the, with, with any money going to transit. But you're still going to have to decide if you're going to go forward. And by the time the February meeting comes, that is the time you.
Go ahead. I was going to add here on that point, I'm prepared for us to meet prior to February because this has a decision has to, we need some direction. So we need to meet next Friday or whenever beforehand.
Mr. Chairman, if that's the case, you're going to want to check on when the councils can all get, I'm sorry, when the mayors can get in front of the councils. In my case, while I think we'll have a discussion on Monday, it's probably the twenty-fifth, which is my second meeting of January, when we would be able to have a conversation in earnest.
Okay. I was going to ask that, but we need to know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Barker.
So I, I guess I'm a little confused because I just heard, I think it was the county manager indicate that the decision need to be made January or February. Was, was, did I misunderstand or was that not what I heard?
No, I think that, I think that's correct, that we said we'd like a decision in January. I think February is kind of the latest to make one. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we, East Point will be ready. We have a meeting on this Monday and the following Monday. And so I know other cities have different meeting times. And so that's why I was saying the first meeting, the first Friday in February. Which is our scheduled meeting of mayors is just like having a meeting before the end of January at this point. Mayor Bot, Mayor Barker just indicated they won't have their meeting until January twenty-fifth. So the meeting would either be that week or we know we're having a meeting the following week on the first Friday.
Well, let us say then, can we agree to no later than that first, our regular, next regularly scheduled meeting, that first Friday in February, no later than that?
I think that would be acceptable.
That's fine. Yeah.
Yes, but I'd also be happy to meet the end of the week of the twenty-fifth because I think for all of us, that would wrap up all of our meetings for January. So I, I mean, again, I think this is an important topic. I'm not trying to put it off. I just want to make sure that we've all had a chance to really discuss it with our councils.
Okay. Hopefully we're all hearing the same thing. So no later than our next regularly scheduled meeting, first Friday in February. That we will have a decision, one way or the other.
Right.
All right. Any other comments on T-SLOSS at this time? Okay. So the second item is listed on the printed agenda was transit. We sort of touched on that.
Yeah, I think they're both together.
So we have a, a few minutes left. And I believe at our meeting, I'm not sure how many mayors listened, I think it was Commissioner Ellis. Who thought it would be important for us. And this is not on the printed agenda. But since we are together and that there seems to be new money, at least in the pipeline, coming to us. Can Dr. Rochelle, are you with us? Madam CEO, Madam CFO?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'm here.
Okay. So would you take the time to, to talk to us about this new allocation and what you understand is in how it might be. Uses and how it might be distributed once we get it or if we get it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to do that. Good morning, Pamela Rochelle, Deputy Chief Operating Officer. The funding that Mr. Chairman is referring to is the result of decisions made in the Consolidated Appropriations Act. Which earmarked twenty-five billion dollars for rental assistance. This assistance will be allocated to states and local jurisdictions. And is earmarked specifically for rental assistance and utility assistance. The program does outline specific eligibility requirements, specific reporting requirements. And other compliance issue in compliance regulations. And each of the states should receive the funding. And the local jurisdictions should receive funding by the end of January. At this time, we don't know the specific allocation that Fulton County will receive. But wanted you to be aware that this funding should be coming to the county. And the specific purpose is rental assistance and utility assistance.
All right. Any questions or?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Lee Morris.
Mr. Morris?
I don't know if you, if you said it, Dr. Rochelle, but my understanding from, from our commission meeting. Was that this will be made available to cities and counties of more than two hundred thousand population?
Yes, sir. That is correct. So.
Unless San Diego Springs has grown an awful lot, there will be nothing going directly to the cities outside of Atlanta.
Well, we're planning on invading Roswell and taking it over and make sure we got enough people.
Well, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that you're going to annex Buckhead. So my property tax mileage will drop by more than half.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Again, my suggestion was, was Mr. Chairman that, that, that we do address this with the city so that we don't have the same problem we had with CARES Act money. And however we figure it out. And I also understand, Dr. Rochelle, that this is not for rental assistance for small businesses who are suffering to pay their rents. It's for individuals and apartments. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's for rental assistance. It doesn't designate whether it's an apartment or a home. But it does indicate that it's specifically for rent and not mortgage. So.
And it's not, it's not for business rent, for small businesses.
Correct. That's, that's right, Commissioner Morris.
Right. And again, you know, if, if, if we try to dole it out. To the cities and, and everybody sets up their own program, you've got all that duplicate overhead. So, but, but I want to make sure that we. That we communicate with the cities and have a buy-in from all the cities on this.
I just want to say thank you that we're even having this conversation on the front end. I really appreciate it. I think that is a lesson learned from the CARES Act. And I think it's great. And I want to acknowledge and thank Fulton County for that. I also think obviously the cities will know which not-for-profit organizations within our jurisdictions can get that money out in the most effective way. And as you said, Commissioner Morris, I think a force multiplier is going to be needed here to really do an effective job.
And the act does clearly state that the municipalities are supposed to go to the states. So you should actually start with them now too. Because it clearly states at this time.
I had a couple of questions regarding this issue and I had already written them out because I know it's an important one for a number of people in our city. In terms of administering the program, is, the plan is to work with the nonprofits that, that received CARES Act funding through the county? No?
We had that discussion, but I'm not, I don't think that that's the case.
We haven't decided.
Okay. Yes. Thank you, Madam County Attorney. This is just an initial conversation. No plans have been made for what the distribution model or the service delivery model would, will be. And we look forward to speaking with you about that.
And, and I look forward to continuing the conversation as well. And I would echo Mayor Barker's sentiments that I'm glad we're having these conversations ahead of time. But certainly one of the things that concerned me when discussing the distribution of the CARES Act funding. In regard to this, this emergency assistance was the fact that a lot of the institutions that you worked with were inside the city of Atlanta. So I would urge the, the board and everyone considering this to make sure that we are actually touching Fulton County residents. That live outside the city of Atlanta because that's, that's who this is intended for. And certainly we would expect, and I, I'm talking on behalf of, of my colleagues here and speak up if I'm, if I'm. If, if, if you disagree, but I certainly want to make sure that we are accounting for every single penny of this. I know that there were concerns about how some of the CARES Act money was spent on city of Atlanta residents prior, essentially sort of. Reflecting a, a double dip for some of those residents. And this money is intended for Fulton County residents that live outside the city of Atlanta. In our cities, we want to make sure that it gets to the people that need it.
All right. Mr. Mayor, was that Mayor?
They, they've answered my questions. I, I agree with Mayor, Mayor Bro, one hundred percent. I mean, we even go and read Mayor Barker. A little bit.
Oh, Mayor, don't, don't say that where it's, you know, archived because you could get in trouble.
I got you.
Chair, may I speak?
Yes, please.
So I, I agree with my colleagues, Mayor Barker, Mayor Broome. And based upon the population requirement of over two hundred thousand in Fulton County, that's only going to be the county and the city of Atlanta. So again, echoing all of the other residents who live in Fulton County, live in one of our fourteen cities. And so the money will be supporting the residents within our cities because if Fulton County is providing money outside of the city of Atlanta. That will be meeting the needs of our residents. And so I'll be looking to, again, as they indicated, the, the county, the audit. And to make sure that, you know, the funding is not going, like residents in Atlanta aren't receiving a double pool of funds.
Right.
That there is that pool that they will get and they should get based on their population. But the funds that Fulton County receives should be going to residents in the other fourteen cities in the county. Because outside of that, there are only about seven hundred residents in unincorporated Fulton County, right? So I, I'm sure there's no plan to like give all of it to just them. So as we move forward, you know, being able to say by city, you know, how much assistance went to, you know, residents in each city. Would be very helpful as it relates to record keeping as well. So that we'll be able to know that that is there. And I again want to pub, I, I too thank Commissioner Morris for, for bringing this up on the front end and that we're having this conversation now. Before the, the funds are received. And I, I want to just again, thank the county because the city of East Point has received grant funding of two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars for rental mortgage and utility assistance. Through the homelessness prevention grants, homelessness prevention or response. And so we are grateful for that. And we know that we will be using those funds. But as it relates to this pool of funds, I'm excited as well because that is another additional funding that can be used. To support our residents and help them get through this difficult time. We will get through this together. And these types of funds help ensure that we are there for our residents in ways. That really will help deal with the challenges that they're facing right now. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, just had a quick question for Dr. Rochelle. Do you, do we know yet, it seemed like in some of the initial texts and sort of commentary that was coming out relating to this specific bucket of funds. That it was going to have a lot more stringency around kind of the specific requirements that had to be met and who qualified and so forth. Do we have that detail yet? Are we still sort of waiting on specific guidance from? On kind of what that would look like?
Thank you, Morris. Yes. Treasury has already released the eligibility criteria. And the reporting requirements as well as the other compliance requirements that will be required for use of these funds in the county.
Okay. Is it, is it safe to say that it, it is, does have a lot more stringency to it than sort of the generic batch of CARES funds that came out the first go around?
Yes, absolutely. There is income criteria and other criteria related to the specifics around. How much rental assistance can be provided for how many months? It also clearly identifies what they can, what they term the duplication of benefits. So if a constituent is already receiving any other type of federal assistance for rent and utilities, they will not be eligible for this round of funding. So to make the finer point, this is absolutely much more stringent in reporting and in eligibility and tracking.
In, in light of that, and I know that there's going to be a tremendous amount of sensitivity to try to get these funds out and to focus hands and help folks as soon as possible. But, you know, we all know when, when things come with a lot of strings and reporting requirements around them, does that? Do you feel like, or do you have a sense right now, is this going to significantly sort of narrow the pool of folks that are really going to be capable of administering it?
Well, I think, I, I think that relying on partners that do have a history of supporting the community with rent and utility assistance. Will be helpful simply because many of them, as we saw in the first round of funding, already have eligibility criteria of their own. And they're used accustomed to adhering to those kinds of guidelines. In addition to that, this funding does allow for ten percent administration. And so that will add some capacity to an organization to have some dedicated time and focus on the administration of these dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments at this time? Any further comments?
Mr. Chairman, just one, one thing on, behind those questions. If we can just make sure that those partners, if, if the county chooses to do it that way, are where people are. That is so key because allowing, having families having to travel to supply documentation, et cetera. Is going to be another hurdle and families are already hurting. They, you know, transportation has, has been cut. We, we know that our, our neighbors in Palmetto have, haven't seen MARTA for, since the beginning of the pandemic. And so if we can get resources where people are and think about that now, before we're actually administering the program. I think that we'll, we'll all be better off and people. before we're actually administering the program, uh, I think that we'll, we'll all be better off, and people will actually have access to those funds.
Thank you, Mayor, and that will be uh our commitment, my uh personal commitment. Other comments at this time?
Uh, this is Vince Williams. I just want to uh certainly echo uh everyone who gave great thanks to uh, uh, our friend for bringing this discussion up because certainly uh this is too important. We still have many of our uh citizens who did not receive any rental or, or, or assistance at all. And uh, you know, I'm being inundated with phone calls because they said that we heard that Fulton County was giving, you know, assistance out. And certainly we had to share with them, you know, that there are resources available, but we didn't as a city have funds to assist with rental assistance. So I am so glad that this, this opportunity is in front of us and that we'll be able to hopefully get a, a sizable amount of money to help as many people as possible, you know. And uh certainly I want to thank all of you for uh, uh, moving forward with having the, these discussions that are so important. And again, I have to bring up again uh the job Fulton County did on the elections that cannot go uncelebrated, you know, because you did a phenomenal job. I, I said it earlier and I have to keep saying it because it was seamless, and uh we had no problems, and I certainly appreciate the effort that has gone into that. And certainly thank you, Chairman, for stopping by every voting precinct in all of the county. Uh, I mean, you were like, where's Waldo? You and, and the county manager. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Other comments? Anything else? Was that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mayor Barker.
I just wanted to summarize, you know, as I leave this meeting today, here's what I've heard. I'm going to go back to T S P L O S. Here's what I've heard. I'm going to be going to my council and asking them for a general consensus as to whether they feel comfortable moving forward with a call for a referendum in November for a T S P L O S two. In that discussion, I would imagine they're going to give me some parameters uh under which that answer could be a yes. They may say, as long as it's up to a certain dollar amount, uh, sorry, percentage, uh, or if it does or does not include transit, uh, or in their instance, they may add the comment about stormwater. So I hope the expectation is that we'll each be coming back uh with a yes, and these are the conditions, uh, or a no, if that's uh happens to be the answer, uh, because we did not get through enough of the discussion to do what I was hoping for, which was frame up uh the specific ask that we were asking each of our councils. So in light of that, uh, mayors, uh, is that your plan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Barker, I, I think you, you summed it up. We, we've indicated that, that's how, that's what we understand. I don't think it is prudent for us to continue to have those discussions today and make it seem as if none of us are strong mayor former governments, right? We all have a council manager former government, and we need to take it back to our council. And so um we've heard all of the, the comments from everyone today. Um, and definitely will be able to share kind of where people are as we're making those decisions. But, you know, my commitment is definitely to be ready at our fe- um, first meeting in February, um, the first Monday, I think that's probably going to be like February sixth or so, um, or fifth. And, and, and um of our mayor's meeting and be able to move forward or not, but at least have decisions available.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, Chair, if you would, uh, momentarily, I just would like to make a friendly suggestion. If we could work out our techni- uh technological issues, I was on the uh, I was on it as early as forty-five minutes for, beforehand, and I was not able to hear or, or uh be seen until about a quarter after. So we could just, this is very important to me, and I would like to have all of the information. Uh, so we could just make sure we do a, a little bit better job of trying to work out the technological, uh, technological issues. I really would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for your information, the, the uh commissioner who just spoke is our, our newest member, uh, Commissioner uh Khadija Abdul Rahman. Welcome, and many of you know her, but for those of you who do not, we're excited about having her as a member of the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County. Any other comments?
Thank you, Chair.
If not, let me say one thing in closing. First of all, with respect to the CARES money, I am so pleased that all cities complied with the request and all funds were and reported to us on time. So that's a real plus for us. And I think that Fulton County, when you read and hear what other counties did or did not do, no one was as uh proactive and as aggressive and as responsive to spending that money as was Fulton County. So that is a tribute to all of us, not only the Board of Commissioners, but each mayor and council. I'm also pleased that we're participation in these meetings. Um, we have five, actually six of the seven commissioners today and ten of the uh Mayor Hirsch had a different situation, but the-
Who is that logged in with my name and not muted?
Yeah. All right, Natalie, that's pretty good.
That was good music, I mean-
That was not me.
It sounded good, hey?
Uh, that was not me, but hey.
Well, thank each and every one of you for your participation, and we will meet again on February fifth. Without any objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Keep believing, keep believing.
Have a good weekend, everyone.
We can do this.
Thank you, Chairman.
God bless you. I love you. There ain't nothing you can do about it. Bye.
Bye.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
How you doing, sir?
Man, I'm telling you, I'm trying to keep believing.